...on top, that is, I hear and I forget, I read and I remember, I do and I understand, which was spoken by Confuse. And, what I want to emphasize is, I do and I understand. Why? Because in Toastmaster, we improve ourselves by making the mistake. Do not be afraid to make the mistake. This is the room for you to make the mistake. Do not be afraid. Once you make the mistake, you can know where to improve, you can know how to improve. So, you need to do, you do, then you understand, okay? Then I would like to introduce my assistant. Rich, Z C. Rich, yeah. Okay, let's start from the first one. I will introduce the traditional education system and the new education system. Let's see the first one. When in traditional education system, we have a competent communicator and a competent leadership, which you can see on the picture one, on the right side. You can see there are two menus, which will, which if you join the Toastmaster International, you will receive two menu. Then you can follow the instruction. It will help you to become a competent communicator and a competent leadership. And in the C C, competent communicator, we will just call it C C, and the competent leadership will call it C L. Uh, you will complete ten speeches, from C one, Icebreaker, to C ten, inspire your audience. And the one who complete all these speeches will receive the achievement, which we call it C C from the Toastmaster International, right, Rich?
Yes.
C C. And, how to complete the C L? Is, you need to become the officer to run the club, and you need to master the competition. That is a traditional education system. But, that is not a point. Because, right now, all of you include the senior member, we all need to run the Pathway system, the new education system. Pathway is a combination, combination between C C and C L, which means, if, when you running on the Pathway, it will, uh, how to say? You will learn the leadership skill and communication skill at the same time, okay? And, Pathway provide ten different paths for you to choose, or you can say ten different style. And what is the difference between those ten? Let me make you an example. I put two example on the, your handout. You can see the first one, dynamic, dynamic leadership, which was written in, it help you to build your skill as a strategic leader. The project on this path focus on understanding leadership and communication skill. And, dynamic leadership, you can see the capital, we are call it D L. And, another path is presentation mastering, which we call it P N. And the description about it is, help you build your skill as an accomplished property speaker. The project on this path focus on learning how an audience respond to you and improve your connection with audience member. So, you can understand, different paths provide for different styles. If you, different style. So, if you're looking for the further information, if you want to know what is the ten paths, please scan the Q R code on the link, link one. We present for, we present for the Chinese person in A, and the English person, B. You can scan it later, okay? Now, let's go to the second part. In the Pathway, every path contain five level. From level one to level five. You can see level one, mastering from the mentor. Level two, learning your style. Level three, increasing knowledge. Level four, building skill. Level five, demonstrating experience. Okay, let's, let's see the picture two, the level one part. There are three speech inside the level one, which is, first, Icebreaker. Second, evaluation and feedback. And the third, research and presenting. There are three project, right? P one, P two, and P three. And, I would need to tell you, actually, there are four project in level one. And what is the fourth project? It is different, uh, everyone have different fourth project because it will depending on the path you choose, okay? Now, let's see, you will see, uh, P N, A one dash P one on agenda, which mean, which mean, presentation mastering as his path. And, the speaker is should, is delivering the level one, project one speech, okay? So, you can understand why we written P N, A one, P one on the agenda. Level one, project one, okay? And next, actually, what you should do on every project doesn't only contain one speech. For instance, if you, if you want to complete the project two, which is evaluation and feedback, here is the step. First, you need to deliver a speech. And second, oh, by the way, when you deliver a speech, there will be I E to evaluate your speech. And the second, you need to accept the suggestion from the I E, then improve it, and then deliver the second speech. This is the step two. And step three, you need to be the individual evaluator to I E another person. And, by doing so, by doing the three step, you can complete the project two. Yeah. Okay, so you may ask, where can I find the material? Where can I find the textbook? So, let's see the three part, the third part. Access to education materials. If you are the N T U Toastmaster member, please scan the Q R code, be to access to N T U driver, then you can find all the education material inside it. And, if you are the Toastmaster International member, which mean you pay one thousand sixty six hundred to, uh, to Toastmaster International, you can access all the material from the Basecamp. And, but the Spacecamp mean, I will going to show you. Okay. You can access to this website from the Q R code, link three, Basecamp. Do you see, this is the Toastmaster International headquarter website. And first, oh, by the way, uh, if you pay, if you already pay for the one, one thousand sixty hundred, we will creating account for you. Then you will receive your account message and your email. And, your email address will be your account. And you need to reset the password. Once you doing so, you can use your account, your email, and your password to access into the Toastmaster International headquarter website. So, I'm going to show you how to do it. First, you need to press login. Yeah? And press your email and password. Okay. Don't remember my password. Okay, so you can now, you can see, yes, by then, I login to the website. Then, how to access to your material? You need to click this way, Pathway, Pathway. And then, go to Basecamp. This way? Yeah. Click it. Oh, by the way, if you cannot remember all the process, I make a note for you. You can scan in the link two, initiate the Pathway system. It has all the operation menu on it. If you cannot remember, you can do by it, okay? Once you access to this, first, you need to, test this, continue to test the action. Yeah? Select your language. This Chinese? Ah, never mind, that's okay. Okay, for me, just click it, click it. Hurry up, and start. And then, you will, uh, the website will provide you about ten questions to ask you, about your characteristic, about how you're feeling about the leadership and the communication. And after you finish all the question, the system will provide the best three selection of your paths, and you can choose it from the three paths. And of course, you don't have to choose from three. You can choose from ten paths, yeah. It depends on you. But, in my case, I choose my first priority. And then it's all, and go back, go back. Go back. Oh, no. Okay, 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 okay. And once you finish, you lock down your paths, you can, you can access from this, login as a member. And then you will enter into this patch. Click, put down, you just see this? This way, click it. Did you see, you found left side? Level one, two, three, four, five. And, in the level one, there are five, uh, four project. The first is the Icebreaker, and the second is Evaluation. And the fa, the fourth is different, depends on everyone's choice. And, please, press this, launch. Click it. Click it. Okay, it takes some time to loading the data. Oh, it's too long, skip it. Okay, I would like just speak in the word. Toastmaster headquarter, by the video, uh, video material and the text material for the every project. Once you enter into a project, you can see the education material, which will teach you how to prepare your speech, no matter in your Icebreaker, in your Evaluation part. And that is very useful to you. But, unfortunately, unfortunately, Basecamp can only be used by the Toastmaster International member, which mean, it can only be used by the one who pay one thousand and sixty hundred. If you are the member who pay sixty hundred, then you can also access the education material from the N T U T N driver. That is the difference. That is why, it is so expensive. So, upgrade from the N T U Toastmaster member to international, Toastmaster International member today, Rich? What did you say?
Just do it.
Louder. Just do it! Yeah, just do it, okay? Okay, so, now you get the material. Let's see the fourth part. What should I do to learn and improve? First, we'll talk about the communication skill and English speaking skill. Well, for the first time, prepare your speech, I would suggest to access only material first, read it and learn it. And, you need to discuss with your mentor. Your mentor will help you to construction yourself. He will help you to write down your, help you to how, uh, tell you how to write down your thought on the script. And once you finish your script, once you complete your script, you can send your script to your mentor, and your mentor will revise it, and then give you back. And now, it's the time, you have a script, right? You can practice at home. Most important thing is, when you speak it out, you need to count the time, because the limitation of your Icebreaker is from four minutes to six minutes. You need to count, how many time you spending, um, when you read your script, yeah? Also, you can ask your mentor for help, uh, for, for example, you can ask your mentor go out, and then use deliver a speech to him, and he will, he will help you to give you the instruction, okay? That is a preparation before we go to the stage. Now, you can go to the stage to deliver your speech. When you sending a speech, there's an hour counter, and there's a timer. Timer will tell you how many time you use. And hour counter will tell you how fast your speech, your speech is it. And, the individual evaluator will tell you, what is your strength, and what is, what is the part you can improve. And, receive it, accept it, and improve it next time. Then, that is what we grow up in Toastmaster. Okay, now let's go to the page three, Table topic. I believe that I have already say last, last week. Table topic is that is the section, which can help you to training you to organize your thought at very high speed. You need to choose the word, you need to choose the story to answer the question. Of course, it is hard to do at the first time, but the more, the more time you do, the faster you can deliver your, your table topic. So, here I would like to give you a hint, Oreo, yeah? The lovely bread, chocolatey cookie, yeah, Oreo. How does Oreo mean? First, is the opinion. The second is reason. The third is explain. The four is the opinion, to explain your opinion again. And I'll give you example how to use this tip. First, if Table topic master ask me, what is my favorite cookie in this world? And then, do not say, just deliver the first thought in your brain. Just say it, no matter, no matter is nonsense or not, just say it. Deliver your first, what you saw in your, in your brain. I'll say, okay, I'll say, well, I love Oreo, okay? So, what's next? Reason. What is the reason you love the Oreo? I, I may say, well, because the Oreo is a so lovely cookie, that is the only cookie that I can put it into milk, and I can rotate it, and I can eat it, boy, it's so good to me. I love this, so, I love this sweet chocolatey cookie, yeah? That is the reason, right? And then, the most important part, explain. Why I say explain? In next part, explain, you need to extension your thought. How to, I will provide to when. First, is the comparison way. And the second, sorry, the second is the story. I will start from the story, okay? What is story? I can, I may say, well, I still remember, I was a child, I'm so lonely, and I'm, there no one, no one will touch me when I was in a school, but during that time, there's, there's, there's a boy, he comes to me, he speak to me, and then, and we play together. I still can remember the friendship, it's so worthy. And I still can remember, the Oreo, he give to me. It's so, wow, it's so meaningful to me. Whenever I see the Oreo, I remember the friendship. So, that's the reason why I love Oreo so much. See? That is story, although it's a nonsense. That is the power of story. You need to deliver story, yeah, by your experience. And that is the first way. The second way is the comparison. How to use the comparison? I will say it, I'll speak from it. Well, Oreo is chocolate and it's so sweet. Actually, I love to eat the sweet cookie. I don't like, I don't like to eat other cookie because they are so, hmm, they are not so healthy. But, if I eat chocolate, I can put it into meal, and it means I can drink, I can drink the meal at the same time. So, that is the reason why I love Oreo so much. Comparison, yeah. Of course, there's a nonsense. But, once you use the skill about a comparison, you can extend your thought, you can extend your story. And then, the last, opinion, to deliver your opinion again and make a conclusion. So, I may say, uh, maybe I will continue from the story about friendship, okay? Okay, so, Oreo, it is not, it's not just a cookie to me. It is, it is a symbol, it's a memory to me. Whenever I eat it, I remember I, my friend. So, Oreo is the best, best cookie I love in this world, yeah? The conclusion, right? I may answer the first question. What is the most, uh, cookie you love in this world, right? That is the skill, the worst to practice. Okay, this is end of the Table topic. Now, let's jump to the, uh, be the helper or section master. Why be the helper or be the section master can improve your communication skill and English skill? Because, if you be a timer, you need to stand up, stay here to explain the title. And if you, if you become the T A E, just like Rich, you need to stand on here and try to connect all the section together and introduce, introduce all the masters, yeah? You have a chance to speak. So, it will train your communication skill and leadership skill at the same time. So, I would encourage you, try to be the section master, Table topic master, and the helper, to help you, yeah? And the last is the leadership skill. Well, hmm, it's a little complicated. Let's say it. The best way to improve your leadership skill is to be the officer. Why? Once you draw, once, once you become the officer, you join the officer team. And officer team is the group who running the club. And I can tell you, the experience running the club is the same as you running a real company. Why? In N G U Toastmaster, there, uh, actually, in Toastmaster, there are three vice president and the one president, right? And, you can regard vice president as chief executive officer, which we call it C E O. Why? Because, vice president will give the proposal about how to promote our club, how to, hmm, improve education in our club, something like like to the president. And president and the vice president and the other officers will discuss, will discuss with it, discuss it. Does it worth it to execute? What is the benefit? What is the advantage? Yeah. And once, once the proposal is been agreed by the president, and the vice president will start to execute the proportion, he need to gather, he need to gather the officers, he need to find resource, which I mean money, to execute the proposal. And, the good propose, the difference between good proposal and the bad proposal will reflected to the club performer, club per, performers directly. If it's a good performers, you can see, wow, there are so many people at our club, and you can see it's a vivid club, yeah? If it is the bad proposal, you can see, wow, why there's so, no one come to our club, yeah? So, that is the reason why I say, running a club is a, is the same as running a company. Besides, as the officer, you need to understand about the current problem. Actually, the N T U Toastmaster, we have already achieved the financial independence, which mean, if we, if we don't counting on the money from the college, we still can live alone. And, that is the reason why we can do this. Before color flyer is very expensive. And that is the reason why we can do the certificate. This is very expensive. Oh, that cost money, yeah?
Very expensive.
Yeah. So, if you join the Toastma, if you join the officer team, you need to worry about all of these things. And of course, complete, and the other, other idea you will meet frequently. But, the time, when you face it, your leadership skill improve. That is the reason why I suggest you, maybe next time you can join the officer team. So, how many time do I still have?
You don't count the time, you can say whatever you want.
Okay. Okay, actually, this is the end of all the education system. Right now, I would like to play a little game. It's a, it's about, it's just like about the Table topic. But, you can only answer the Oreo. Understand me? If I ask, Rich, what, what the president you will give to your girlfriend? Oreo. Say it.
I will give her Oreo.
Yeah, that is, okay? Yeah. Use Oreo as your answer, then deliver it. It's just a game. Yeah, just say something nonsense, some, say something that is real. The purpose is training you to deliver your thought, okay? So, let's begin. The first question.
What?
It's kind of easy. What is the favorite food you like in the most? Any volunteer? One, two, three, no, you. Answer. Nice ball! Listen? Any, hi. Do you need microphone?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay. All right, appreciate.
Hello, my name is Sunny, I'm doing, I'm a freshman doing finance. So, answering the question, what my favorite food is, it would be Oreo.
You're going, you're going, you're going.
Why Oreo? Because Oreo is the only selection that is cheap in the supermarket, and it can be found anywhere and everywhere. So, you can find Oreo in, um, seven eleven, which is a convenience store that's literally around every corner. You can find it in the airports, in the M R T. And Oreos come in different variations, I believe. I think there's the classic Oreo cookie, the round one. And then they develop it into the, the, the Oreo rolls. I don't know if they exist, but, um, they also have the Oreo cake that they sell in London, that I really like. And people also use Oreos as, um, milkshake, smoothies. They add it as ingredients into biscuits, foamy biscuits. Oreo can be used everywhere, that's why I love Oreo, thank you.
Thank you so much. You do very well, yeah? It's a game, just keep it, okay? Now, the second question. Second question. Let me see. What is the best gift you will give to your best friend? Does anyone want to answer discussion? What is the best gift you will give to your best friend? Okay, please. Raise that?
Yes.
What? Please, go to the stage. Alan, thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, uh, that, is working?
No, no, I will, please, okay, stop.
Well, I think the best gift ever would be Oreo. The, the reason why I love some Oreo, Oreo is because, one day, it literally save my life. I will tell you the story. I went to Vietnam with four friends. We rent a house, like, really, really far away, just like, in the jungle, in the seaside. So, uh, before we went there, we, we need to worry about, you know, to get food, and to get, you know, stuff to eat, and to leave, you know? So, all my friends were worried about, you know, alcohol, beer, whiskey, whatever. Alcohol for three days. But, in that night, we, we get off. We got so wasted. And the next day, we were so hangover, we couldn't just move. We didn't have any food. And then, I just walk. And then I just walk to the kitchen, I saw a miracle, a Oreo. It was amazing, it was the best food I had in my life. I still can like feel melting in my mouth. It was perfect, it was a gift from heaven, so that's the reason I love words.
You figured out this big, uh, wonderful story. And the story, it's spend so many time to speak a story. So once you use story to describe it, to keep going and you don't need to worry about time, it doesn't go keep going, keep going. The only thing you need to worry is not to exceed the time limit, okay? Now, the third question. Oreo. How to say? Well, do you have any idea about the question?
Oreo.
Provide, provide a question about the Oreo. Come on, none, any question, just any question. Rich, provide a question.
Oreo.
Yeah, maybe. Think about it.
I think Chinese should work. What's the best song that you have ever heard?
What?
What's the best song that you have ever heard?
Can you? What? Can you do what?
Maybe like, take a try.
Okay, what is the?
What's the best song like?
What is the best song you have ever heard? Wow, it's a challenge. I think it.
Do we need to sing it out?
It depends on you, it depends on you. You only need to connect it to the Oreo.
Oreo?
Yeah, always nonsense, yeah, it's a game, right? Again?
What's the best song that you have ever heard?
What is? What is the best song you have ever heard in your life, okay? Any volunteer? It's time for you to show your nonsense skill. If no, I will try to figure someone.
Me?
No, behind you. Go on. Let's welcome! Try, try to nonsense, say something nonsense. I still next? Speaking, okay?
Oh, hi everybody, and this is my first day in here and I'm answering some strange questions. Okay, so my best song is the commercial of Oreo, commercial of Oreo because, uh, it's such a child, uh, memory for me because, uh, when I saw, when I saw the TV show and, uh, I always saw the Oreo commercial and it would be the best song I told, I, I spent with my grand in my elementary school, kind of, and.
Keep going, keep going. Sorry, tell, tell us about your story.
Oh.
Why you love it, how you love it?
Oh.
Reason.
Oh, when I did, um, math well on my test and my friend comes to me and they send the song of Oreo and give me the Oreo and it's the, I think the best, hmm, present for me when, when I'm down and then send the song and bring the, uh, happy mood for me and, um, at the moment and I forget the bad mood when I, uh, fell out on my test. Thank you everyone.
Yeah, great! Great! Always a nonsense question, but yes, so, okay? Last question, easy one, yeah? What is the connection between, uh, what is the connection between Toastmaster International and the Oreo? Oreo. Does anyone want to try the last question? I think it's very easy, yeah? Say anything you want to say, the last question. Don't try. Hi, do you want try, I have seen you, do you want try? What is the connection between Oreo and Toastmaster International? You two. Do you want try? You and you, do you want try? Okay, go on, go on, go on. Do you want, I can give you another chest. First gift, a wrong costume. Inside, thank you!
Well, I'm back again. Uh, I think there's a very profound connection between Toastmaster and Oreo. Maybe firstly, from a very shallow level, toast and Oreo, they're both food, they both taste amazing, I assume and so obviously there's that, but I think we have to go deeper. We have to understand that Toastmaster is this kind of complicated family and there's layers to it, just like how there's Oreos, how there's layers to Oreos. There's two outer layers of the cookies that surround the very soft cream. Just like how in Toastmaster, there's a VP and all the execs that's trying to surround us and make us better people and together we form one big unit where Oreo makes, that makes Oreo taste better and that makes Toastmatter, Toastmaster become a better club. And if we go even deeper, we have to understand that I'm sure somewhere out there, there's Oreo flavored toast and I'm sure that will taste amazing because Oreo and toast, they are inseparable, thank you. A few more seconds, a few more seconds.
Okay, okay.
Um, we should, okay, and also, you know, obviously, Oreo is what we're talking about today so I think it's, it tastes amazing, toast tastes amazing too. I don't know how to continue, but yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, I believe, I believe all you has become a master of nonsense. Just, Rich.
What? What up?
You are not a good sister, you know? What you should say, what you should say?
Just.
Just do it! Yeah, just do it! Take it easy, it's a training, yeah? No one will tell that you say something wrong, just keep saying, telling a story, okay? So before I end this section, does anyone still remember what does Oreo mean? Oh, are you, okay, can someone answer me? You can, see you hang out, can someone answer me? Hello? If you don't answer, I cannot, I cannot this session. Okay, magic finger, hair. What does Oreo mean?
Oh, all the important skills in speaking.
What?
I don't know.
Oh, okay, okay, another one. What does Oreo mean? Yeah, Oreo. Why I keep say Oreo? Why, what does Oreo mean?
Well, it's to allow for your thought on the idea.
I really say you hang out, what does Oreo mean, you can't tell.
Right here, right, right here.
Right, left. What does, did you really hang out? I spend a lot of time doing, you know?
Opinion, reason, explain, I think.
Okay, slower.
Um, opinion, reason, explain and opinion.
Great, wonderful, thank you! So, remember why I keep to emphasize Oreo because that is the tips for Table topic. Opinion, reason, explain, up here and again. And thank you so much, this is the end of the workshop too. Okay, this is it. And President, thank you so much.